We're going to start this meeting out a little different than normal. We have two public hearings to address. The first public hearing is a public hearing to consider the following proposed zoning map amendments to revise 406 South Broadway Street, permanent parcel number 028-19D-01-117 from R3 High Density Residential to OC Open Space Conservation. I guess, Mr. Hannan, is there anything to add to that before we go for or against?
I can just briefly state, this project has been the planning commission and this request for the rezoning relates to the city purchase and the desires to use the property as a trailhead for the Champion Creek Trail.
Thank you. Is there anybody that wishes to speak for the rezoning? I guess I would just speak to say that as a process of acquiring this property, as Mr. Hannan indicated, and being at the end of the trail, I think this is the appropriate move to change the zoning from a residential to an open conservation zoning classification. Is there anybody that wishes to speak against the rezoning change? Hearing done, the public hearing for the rezoning is closed. The next public hearing is a public hearing to consider the following proposed zoning code text and zoning map amendments per planning commission case number P12-22. Mr. Hannan, can you explain this one?
Yes, this is a large-scale update of the zoning code. We've taken a little over a year working with a consultant with Jacobs Company and with representatives of the community and with each of our design review boards. And it's pretty significant changes, but the existing framework remains.
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Just a couple of brief items of note, we've included much expanded definition sections.
Reports of standing committees. For the Finance Committee, we met this evening at a lengthy meeting for two hours. Our next meeting will be, I believe it's on November 13th.
We've added administrative approvals for smaller projects.
Since November 12th is a holiday, we'll be meeting on November 13th at 5:30.
We've established a central business district for the greater downtown area and otherwise
Health Safety and Sanitation Committee, Mr. Rose.
enhanced many other items and other items of note, things such as putting the fence
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing to report and no meeting scheduled at this time.
Thank you. The Public Properties Committee, Mr. Shields?
regulations into the zoning code from the building and working towards repairing setbacks
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this evening, but we do have a meeting scheduled for Public Properties on
and infill standards.
November 7th at 5:30.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Special Legislation Committee, Mr. Lamb? Is there anybody that wishes to speak in favor of the zoning code text and zoning map amendments?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to report, but I am working on scheduling a special legislation meeting sometime in November so that we can take a look at issues around fracking.
Is there anybody that wishes to speak against the proposed zoning code and zoning map amendments? That's not very exciting.
And my intention of having the meeting is to look at a number of issues that have arisen
That public hearing is closed. Will the clerk please call the roll?
in other communities and how they've dealt with it.
Colosar?
And I view it as an informative opportunity without emotion, but just informative so
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
that we can see what other communities have done and what we might be interested in doing.
Shields?
Here.
Sorry for that, guys.
Coin?
Thank you.
Here.
Hilbert?
Streets and Sidewalks Committee, Mr. Simpson?
Here.
Reading of the minutes?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
No meeting scheduled, nothing to report.
Mr. Shields? Thank you.
I move that the minutes of the regular council meeting of October 9, 2012 be approved
Water and Utilities Committee, Mr. Colosar?
Thank you, Mr. President.
as submitted and prepared by the clerk.
I think we're going to try to have a meeting scheduled here maybe early next month.
Second.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll and approve all the minutes?
We're waiting on the Engineering Department to get a update back on a study that was
Lamb?
Yes.
done on our infrastructure.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
So probably at our next meeting, I'll be able to have an announcement of our next scheduled
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Water and Utilities meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Requests for council action, we have several for the Finance Committee. 12-190, expenditure over $15,000 for the Holiday Lighting LLC. 12-191, land reutilization, 529 West Friendship Street. 12-192, online bill pay. 12-193, LPA project agreement with ODOT for West Smith Road Phase 1. 12-194, USPEA Brownfield Grant Program. 12-195, Montville Tire Express, position to join the JED. 12-196, JED Expansion District, Third Amendment to the Contract. 10-12-197, Amendment Ordinance 154-12, State Route 3 and East Reagan. Reports from municipal officers, Mayor Hamwell?
Thank you, Mr. President. This past Friday evening and Saturday, the Halloween Harvest Family Festival was held on the square. I'd like to thank Main Street Medina and MCRC for hosting this event. It was just another opportunity to draw a great number of people to our historic downtown and benefited the community as a whole. And just an update, the Holiday Tree and Square Buildings on the Square lighting program is progressing well. The gazebo tree lighting and building lighting and street lighting will be Friday, November 16th at 7:00 PM. And then the following evening, Saturday, November 17th, will be the Holiday Parade, which starts at Spring Grove and comes to the square and around the square. And then at the culmination of the parade and delivering Santa to the square will be the fireworks, which is new for this year. There are also many additional events planned, both for the Candlelight Walk Weekend, which is November 16th, 17th, and 18th, as well as throughout the holiday season to again encourage people and entice people to come to our downtown and support our local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Durham, Director of Finance?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, the last departments to be reviewed in the budget process are at our budget meeting tomorrow. And I think this is something that we've all worked together on to get this process to as smooth as it is, which isn't always, there's always going to be bumps in the road. But I was at a meeting last week with some other finance directors and I don't think anybody's working on finishing up their 2017 plan right now, so we should be pretty, we should be pretty happy that we're in that situation. On that situation, our healthcare, as you know, is going to be going up. But I also would like to report our healthcare cost is going up, and as an offset to that, our income tax revenues continue to run stronger than what I had estimated and forecast for this year. So we're going to be adjusting that estimate upwards again. So hopefully that will kind of offset, and if those two can wash out, then it's not so much of a big deal. And there's a couple of other things later in the agenda if you'd like me to comment on.
Thank you. Mr. Huber, Law Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you. Lieutenant Starcher, Police Department?
Thank you, Mr. President. No report this time.
Thank you. Ms. Wright, Economic Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Hannan, the Planning and Community Development Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a brief report. I just want to note that we did receive official word from NOACA that we received $415,000 in grant funding for streetscape enhancements to bring or reinforce the downtown district south from the square to Lafayette. And the improvements will include new street trees, historic street lights, improved truck turning radii, brick accents at the crosswalks, sidewalk repairs, and bio-retention cells in the sidewalks for stormwater management. These improvements would not be under construction yet for a couple of years, and we plan to engage the neighborhood in the coming months as we work on a preliminary design for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Painter, Fire Chief?
Thank you, Mr. President. No report tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, Recreation Center Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. Following the mayor's comments, I also wanted to take a minute to thank the community for coming out to the square last Friday and Saturday for the Medina Recs Second Annual Halloween Festival. Even with the cold and rain, it was a fantastic turnout. I would also like to thank the Medina Hospital, our main sponsor, and partnering with Main Street Medina and then the Medina Community Church who brought out all the games. Other sponsors included Discount Drug Mart, Medina Rotary, Costco, Walmart, Sam's Club, and with a lot of other local donations and support. The local businesses on and around the square stayed open for the over 1,000 trick-or-treaters and handed out candy, which really added to the festivities. I also wanted to thank the schools for all their support and involvement and the local newspapers for all the coverage. Last but not least, I'd like to thank all the departments involved in making this successful, from the mayor's office to the Parks Department, Service Department, police, and LST. Also Maureen Dowell, the MRCRC's Program Specialist who put everything together, our rec center employees, and several groups of volunteers who did a great job of setting up, running, and tearing down the event. So great job to everyone. We look forward to another great event next year. Save the date for next year, October 18th and 19th, 2013. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vogel, Building Official?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm pleased to report that the Medina City Building Department is on track to issue twice as many permits this year as we did last year. I'd like to thank my staff for their hard work and diligence, but I would especially like to thank the property owners here in Medina for their conscientious effort to comply with our adopted building codes. The word is starting to spread that a building permit is well worth a relatively small fee for the safety, peace of mind, and added value to the property that it brings. Thank you again, citizens of Medina. We will continue to assist you in all of your construction needs.
Thank you. Mr. Swanson, Parks and Recreation Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Forestry Department awarded a contract to Paradise Tree Farm to plant 73 trees in various locations throughout the city. Paradise Tree Farm will begin that work this week. And again, the Parks Department crew will just work diligently to prepare the square for upcoming events that the mayor and Mike mentioned, including the Candlelight Walk and the Holiday Lighting spectacle. Thank you.
Thank you. Everybody keeps changing the name on that. Mr. Patton, City Engineer?
Thank you, Mr. President. Updates on our big projects, Lake Road reconstruction, stabilizing the southbound lane was completed last week. We'll prep that lane for pavement, and pavement is scheduled to be installed on that southbound lane Friday and Saturday, November 2nd and 3rd, about two weeks away. Beachwood Drive, all roadway pavement has been completed. Currently, we're working on installing curb drains. Later this week, driveway aprons and sidewalks installation of those will begin. That's expected to take about a week and a half, and the project will be pretty much complete at that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pacoli, Service Director?
Thank you, Mr. President. We are well into the LEAF pickup program. Crews are into their second pass throughout the city today, on October 22nd. They finished the northwest section, the quadrant of the city, and on October 23rd, Tuesday tomorrow, they will be advancing to the northeast quadrant of the city. And note that trucks will not advance to another quadrant until the quadrant they are working in is completed. Every day, the street supervision updates the LEAF map with the help of Dawn, the mayor's assistant, on the website, www.madinaoh.org. And also residents can call the LEAF hotline, 330-725-LEAF, L-E-A-F, which is 5323. And lastly, don't forget about the city auction is scheduled for Saturday, November 10th, 2012, at the City Garage. Starts promptly at 10:00 AM. Viewing is at 9:00 AM, and that is at 781 West Smith Road, the Medina City Garage. Thank you.
Thank you. Notices, Communications, and Petitions. We have one liquor permit. We have not to object to the transfer of a C1 and C2 permit from Franchise USA LLC, doing business as AMPM 2415 1050 North Court Street, to 7-Eleven Inc., doing business as 7-Eleven 36239 1050 North Court Street.
Move not to object?
Second not to object.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Resolution 187-12 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 188-12, an ordinance amending ordinance number 104-12, passed May 29th, 2012, relative to the Ray Mallard splash pad and public restroom project.
Move to approve?
Second.
Mr. Swanson?
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance pertains to the aquatic and restroom facilities being constructed at Ray Mallard Park. We received bids, and the bids came in significantly higher than the engineered estimated costs. And so the additional $80,000 to support the size splash pad that we want in restroom facilities, we requested council to authorize that. That money is coming from three different accounts. $25,000 is coming from Brian Hilbert, Councilman Hilbert's Open Space Fund. $25 is coming from the Parks Fund, and then $30,000 is coming from the grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? And thank you, Mr. Hilbert, for pitching in.
You're welcome, Mr. Coin.
Will the clerk please call the roll and the ordinance?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance 188-12 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 189-12, an ordinance authorizing the city's participation in a moving Ohio-forward demolition program and authorizing the mayor to enter into an operating agreement between Medina County and the City of Medina, designating Medina County as the lead entity responsible for administering the program.
Move to approve?
Second.
Mr. Hannan?
Thank you, Mr. President. These funds, the county received $500,000 from the state to target the demolition of vacant and blighted properties countywide. Under the program, the county would remain the fiscal agent and hire all of the contractors. From our end, from the city, we would work with property owners and submit properties to the county to go through the program. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
I had a, we had a discussion about this in the finance meeting last, at the last finance meeting, and I think I made my, my, um...
Opinions?
Yeah, my opinions, I guess. I made my opinions pretty clear, and I appreciate council, you know, taking that into consideration. But I also think it's important, you know, I respect your views, and I think as long as we, as there's an understanding that this is something of last resort, this is not something we would do without taking many steps beforehand, and that we work, we make every effort to ensure that no properties are allowed to fall into this kind of condition where they would meet a criteria for demolition. In that case, and considering all your opinions, I will vote to support it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? And I would just add to Mr. Lamb's comments. I know that this is an opportunity where we have additional funding if the need arises, that we can take care of problems that may be a safety issue or a health concern. And I think all of us concur that we do want to look at possible ways to improve or save the particular structure if possible, but if we have to take the route of demolition, at least we have funds available that will not be city funds in order to accomplish that goal, whether it be unfortunate or not, at least if we have to do it, we'll be doing it, at least with money available of non-city dollars.
Mr. President, to add to that, I would like to say that it would be only in the hopes to revitalize the neighborhood, not to destroy the neighborhood, that we would have Habitat for Humanity or some other organization come in and build a house as soon as practicable after that.
Thank you. Any further comments or discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll and the ordinance?
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Resolution 187-12 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 188-12, an ordinance amending ordinance number 104-12, passed May 29th, 2012, relative to the Ray Mallard Splash Pad and Public Restroom Project.
Move to approve?
Second.
Mr. Swanson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, this ordinance pertains to the aquatic and restroom facilities being constructed at Ray Mallard Park. We received bids, and the bids came in significantly higher than the engineered estimated costs. And so the additional $80,000 to support the size splash pad that we want in restroom facilities, we requested council to authorize that. That money is coming from three different accounts. $25,000 is coming from Brian Hilbert, Councilman Hilbert's Open Space Fund. $25 is coming from the Parks Fund, and then $30,000 is coming from the grant. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? And thank you, Mr. Hilbert, for pitching in.
You're welcome, Mr. Coin.
Will the clerk please call the roll and the ordinance?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance 188-12 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 189-12, an ordinance authorizing the city's participation in a moving Ohio-forward demolition program and authorizing the mayor to enter into an operating agreement between Medina County and the City of Medina, designating Medina County as the lead entity responsible for administering the program.
Move to approve?
Second.
Mr. Hannan?
Thank you, Mr. President. These funds, the county received $500,000 from the state to target the demolition of vacant and blighted properties countywide. Under the program, the county would remain the fiscal agent and hire all of the contractors. From our end, from the city, we would work with property owners and submit properties to the county to go through the program. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
I had a, we had a discussion about this in the finance meeting last, at the last finance meeting, and I think I made my, my, um...
Opinions?
Yeah, my opinions, I guess. I made my opinions pretty clear, and I appreciate council, you know, taking that into consideration. But I also think it's important, you know, I respect your views, and I think as long as we, as there's an understanding that this is something of last resort, this is not something we would do without taking many steps beforehand, and that we work, we make every effort to ensure that no properties are allowed to fall into this kind of condition where they would meet a criteria for demolition. In that case, and considering all your opinions, I will vote to support it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? And I would just add to Mr. Lamb's comments. I know that this is an opportunity where we have additional funding if the need arises, that we can take care of problems that may be a safety issue or a health concern. And I think all of us concur that we do want to look at possible ways to improve or save the particular structure if possible, but if we have to take the route of demolition, at least we have funds available that will not be city funds in order to accomplish that goal, whether it be unfortunate or not, at least if we have to do it, we'll be doing it, at least with money available of non-city dollars.
Mr. President, to add to that, I would like to say that it would be only in the hopes to revitalize the neighborhood, not to destroy the neighborhood, that we would have Habitat for Humanity or some other organization come in and build a house as soon as practicable after that.
Thank you. Any further comments or discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll and the ordinance?
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Ordinance 190-12 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 191-12, an ordinance amending ordinance number 172-122, passed December 12th, 2011, amendments to the 2012 budget.
Move to approve?
Second.
Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is actually correcting something that was in the last amendment two weeks ago.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll and the ordinance?
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Ordinance 191-12 passes 7-0.
We have three ordinances that are requested to be amended to the agenda. That's ordinance 192-12, ordinance 193-12, and ordinance 194-12.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
I move to add 192-12, 193-12, and 194-12 to the agenda at this time.
Second.
Any discussion on adding the agenda items? Will the clerk please call the roll and the additions?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll and the ordinance?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hilbert?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Will the clerk please call the roll and the ordinance?
Hilbert?
Yes.
Colosar?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Ordinance 194-12 passes 7-0.
Council comments. Mr. Simpson?
Thank you. Just another reminder that we've, two weeks from tomorrow is Election Day, and we can vote early still in the state of Ohio, so please take advantage of that. Exercise your right to vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Further council comments? Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two comments. One is, is, the first one is, listen, when we think about hunger, frequently I think we think about places that are far off and we're not related to, but there are serious hunger issues that are right here in Medina County and in the city of Medina. And I want to thank the mayor and many members of his administration for coming to make bowls for the empty bowls project, and Commissioner Geismann came, auditor Mike Kovak came, and including about 100 other people just from the community that came to make bowls for this project that's sponsored by the Congregational Church. And the project is to raise money, but it's also to raise awareness that right here in the city of Medina, there are serious hunger issues. And on November 3rd, you can go to the church between 5:00 and 7:30. You can spend $10 and buy a bowl that may have been made by the mayor, may have been made by Ms. Rice, and you get a bowl of soup, and it should remind you that there are people in our own community that are hungry and could use assistance. And the second thing I have is, is on November 13th, on Tuesday, Reverend Carter at the it should remind you that there are people in our own community that are hungry and could use assistance. And the second thing I have is, on November 13th, on Tuesday, Reverend Carter at the Second Baptist Church and I are going to hold a meeting that's open to the public to discuss housing issues and neighborhood issues, particularly in the area in Ward 1. And I course invite other council people to come to the meeting at 7:00 o'clock on November 13th at the Second Baptist Church. Thank you.
Any further council comments? I have two. Again, tomorrow, on October 23rd at 5:30, we have the final budget hearing. If you missed the previous ones, you have an opportunity to come tomorrow and get hit the last one. Also, on Monday, I think this is correct, Monday, October 29th, we have the Ward 2 meeting at 7:00 PM. And that's at Clegg at Middle School. That's on East Union. That'll be the Ward 2 meeting, and we hope we have a good turnout for that one to voice your concerns and questions regarding anything with respect to Ward 2 or for that matter, anything in the city. Is there any other comments? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Yeah.
We have finance.